Good morning and welcome to this sunny Tuesday, September 12th. Committee of the Whole Meeting for the District of Squamish. So first of all, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. Please be advised that this council meeting is not being livestreamed, but is being recorded and will be available to the public for everybody to view on the District of Squamish website following the meeting. If you have concerns, please notify the corporate officer. Not present at the meeting? There is no corporate officer present at this meeting. First, I will call an adoption of the agenda. Any objection, any?
All in favor.
All in favor, yes. Thank you. All opposed? None opposed? Adoption is it? Agenda is adopted.
You want to know who moved in the second?
Thank you very much. Counselor French moved. Mayor Herbert seconded. Thank you very much. This is a very unique committee of the whole. Well, annually unique. We are meeting for our annual bike ride. So are we adjourning now and going to meet at? We will launch now. Okay. So to launch the first item of business, I leave it to staff Dora Gunn to present our bike tour of Squamish. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Dora Gunn, Transportation Planner with the District of Squamish. I'm going to be presenting at a number of the stops on the tour. Also presenting today is Jesse Morewood, Capital Projects Manager, and Devin Kainaga, Acting Manager of Municipal Engineering. So starting off at this spot here, I wanted to talk about a project that we have underway right now. It's the all ages and abilities bike route on the west side of town. So we've been working with Urban Systems since the beginning of the year. Planning about where we could do an all ages and abilities bike route. The Active Transportation Plan that was adopted in 2016 recommended a protected bike lanes on the whole government road corridor. So the whole way from here all the way down to downtown. It's a challenging recommendation due to primarily cost, but also the number of driveways along the route. And so this study takes a look at are there alternatives or some alternatives on some parts of the route that we could use to make this more achievable? So at a high level, when we're talking about all ages and abilities type of bike lanes, there's kind of three main options. One of them is a trail in its own alignment, so something like the corridor trail. Those are amazing. We did a survey. Everybody loves those. And so when possible, we love to use that type of facility. Now, sometimes there's an alignment, but it doesn't exactly go where people want to get to. And so then it becomes less of a good choice because we really need our trail to go exactly where it needs to go for people to get where they need to go. So the second option is a bike path that's at sidewalk level. And this is something like what we see on Mamcram west of the highway on the north side, that new one we built there. So that's bike lane sidewalk level, also excellent to ride. The challenges with those are that they can be very, very expensive to install, particularly where we don't have stormers and stuff. So if we have ditches, then it costs a lot to install storm, plus curb under sidewalk and the bike lanes, it becomes very expensive. The other challenge to those is that if there are quite a number of driveways like there are here, the bike path ends up going up and down like this, so it becomes not quite such a pleasant experience for cyclists. And then the third type of facility is a bike path at street level, separated by some sort of barrier. So that's like what we're standing on here. They can be either multi-use, so shared pedestrian and cyclists, or they can be just for bikes, they can be bidirectional, or they can be unidirectional. These are much less expensive to install. The challenge with these is that the maintenance costs are higher. So both just for sweeping at all times of year, and then in the winter, the snow clearing is a real challenge. There's nowhere for public works to put the snow. They have to put it in here, and then they have to move it again to get it out of the way essentially. So that becomes expensive. So through the study that we're looking at now, we haven't finalized it, so we don't have final recommendations yet, but it is looking like we may be recommending a combination of types of facilities. So starting with more of the Discovery Trail, off-street trail in the southern part of town, and moving to something more like this in the northern part of town. And so if that does go ahead, along with that, we'll becoming an ask for more money for public works to maintain something like this. And that's all for the stop questions.
So for the separated bike lanes, have we tried using those? I don't know what they're called. You know, the little yellow fluffy? Yeah. Is that something we've considered? Because that would, you know, alleviate some of the stress of snow.
Through the Chair. So yes, we have considered that through discussions with public works. It actually makes it harder for them to clear the snow, interestingly, because with these, at least they can put the plow kind of along the edge of it and run it along. Whereas with those, they're more likely to just take them out with the plow. So they have to be really careful trying to plow with the delineators. So they prefer this.
Couldn't you remove the delineators for winter? But it's not a separated lane at that point, but?
That is a possibility. So far, we haven't found a delineator that attaches into the ground in a way that is easily removable and doesn't leave a little puck behind. So that's something.
Also mess up for the snow.
Yeah, like again, the plow, just because they can't even see it then, because it's just a puck. They would very likely just take it out. Yeah, so it's a challenge.
Great. Then I think at this point, we'll call a recess. We'll take a three-minute recess and reconvene on the other side of Depot Road. Thanks very much.
Hello, Eric.
And welcome back to this Committee of the Whole Meeting for the District of Squamish on September 12th. We are reconvening with our bike tour.
Great, thank you. So here we are on Depot Road. Depot is one of the short-term priorities in the Active Transportation Plan for both cycling and pedestrian infrastructure. It's a route to school, and there are speeding concerns on Depot, particularly with cars coming off the highway. So we're just starting to design for Depot right now. The primary goal of the project is to create an all ages and abilities route, particularly for kids trying to get to school. And right now, we're just looking at the section between the highway and government. So similar to what we were talking about, the last stop, trying to build a protected bike lane on both sides that's raised up the curb is just an extremely expensive project, particularly because of how long this stretch is. And so, and given how many road projects we have in Squamish that we want to undertake, anytime we can, we're looking at opportunities to meet our goals, but in a very cost-effective way. So now, we haven't finalized the design, so at the moment, we're just considering options. But one option that we are considering is a sidewalk on the north side. The north side, because kids are trying to get to school in that direction. So kids who are already on the north will have a sidewalk. Kids from the south side can cross to the north to use the sidewalk. There is some existing sidewalk on the north as well. And there are development projects that provide an opportunity to build some sidewalk on the north. Where there is no sidewalk yet, we would build it with a bike lane up the curb. So that takes care of... And when there is sidewalk existing, then we have a bit of a challenge trying to decide how to protect that bike lane. So that's something we haven't quite sorted out yet. But if possible, we retain the existing sidewalk and then protect the bike lane. Now, the south side, there is an opportunity to do something, again, similar to what we did there on government. So using more of a barrier style, keeping costs low for now. And then if development occurs, then that could be upgraded through development. So as I mentioned, this is all not confirmed yet, so we're still, we just started in the design process. But this is the direction we're thinking at this point. We are still aiming to move to construction on Depot for Phase 1, which will likely be something on the north side in 2024. And that is it for me for the stop.
And we will go into recess? Oh, sorry. Thank you very much. We will not be going to recess.
So just a question on, at our first stop there, as we're sort of standing back from it, the protected lane going up Government, is that meant to be two-way traffic? And then if so, what considerations are being implemented at the intersections to ensure that the drivers are looking for bikes from both directions? Before, if that's what we're going to sort of replicate, thinking that's what we're going to potentially replicate in other places in the community, even Depot.
Through the Chair, that's a great question. So on Depot, we were aiming for unidirectional, so here, that would not be as much of an exaggeration. But on Government, if we do go with bidirectional, which is a possibility, the intersections become extremely important. And so we haven't exactly designed one yet because this isn't continuous at this point. But we will if we do this project, if we move ahead with that thinking. And it's got a lot to do with making sure that drivers understand what's happening. So installing that green paint, narrowing the intersection where we can to make it a shorter crossing distance for bikes, and then just get signage as well.
Do we have any understanding of like how many years of maintenance costs it would take to pay off the higher capital cost for our range or separate bike lanes?
Through the Chair, we don't have that number, but it's a very excellent question. It's probably something that we should develop and bring to council.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's a great one.
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, we have all sorts of different types of bike lanes throughout town. And I was wondering if there is any thought put into making color demarcations that people understand that that is a bike lane? Like, because you know, some of them are green, and some of them aren't at all. Like, some of the shared-use roads don't have any coloration that indicate that it's a bike lane. And I was wondering if there's any kind of visual things that were considered or not?
Through the Chair, so all of the bike lanes that are bike lanes should be indicated with either stencils and/or signage. So you can see a sign up that says... The signage is easier to maintain. You just put it in once, it stays there usually. However, the paint requires repainting. So there are some cases in town where we just have a sign and we don't have the paint. Typically, we do have both. As far as the green paint goes, we try to install that only where it's a high-complex zone. The green paint is quite expensive, both to install and then to repaint as well. It's a different type of paint, so we only do that in the high-complex zones.
Any further questions? No? Thank you very much. Then we will recess and reconvene.
Our next stop is at the Watershed Grill, parking lot.
Reconvene at the Watershed Grill in approximately 10 minutes, I'll guess. Thank you. Great, and welcome back to the September of the 12th Committee of the Whole, our annual bike ride. I'll pass it over to Staff member Dora Gunn.
Thank you very much. I'm actually going to pass it over to Devin Kainaga for this next stop.
Yeah, so what we're talking about here is a planned multi-use path connection from essentially this parking lot all the way along what is known as the Hop Creek Farm to the very north end, which eventually will tie into the Bean Around the World property, or where Bean Around the World is located. So the nice thing about what is proposed here is that it's actually going to be off of the road completely. And so it's going to be on, if you're looking up the road, it's going to be on the east side of the tree line, between the tree and the property, tree line and the property. So yeah, once again, the nice aspect of this is that it's going to be keeping it completely off of the road. So it's essentially a protected multi-use path. The challenge that we're facing is how close we can get to the trees, because these are really nice mature trees. And so that's what we're sorting out right now, is how close we can get to the trees and what kind of, essentially, what kind of path that's going to look like.
Questions?
Mayor Herbert? Having ridden this stretch of road, I'll just say a few times, the, those trees put a lot of material onto the road at different points of the year. And just wondering around, are there any design considerations for things like that? Would a few of this as an example, tons of leaves in the fall, or? I think they're, I don't know what else they drop off. You've experienced this?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I think you're wrong.
Yeah. Through the Mayor, that's a very great point. It's pretty tough when you're in a town or when you're in this type of scenario where there is a lot of debris, and especially when we get a lot of wind, we do see a lot of debris. So it comes down to maintenance and planning accordingly to be able to maintain that stretch. From a design perspective, you could essentially distance. Just one of the challenges we have with this is that we don't want to push into private property if we don't have to. So we are trying to keep it tight to the trees. So it's that balancing act, because the trees also in the summer give shade. And so, yeah, definitely a challenge.
Counselor Stoner?
And similarly, is that meant to be unidirectional? So travel southbound will still be on the other side of the highway?
Oh, sorry. Through the Mayor, no, this is going to be a multi-use path, so bidirectional.
Okay, so on the bidirectional path, I am just curious about how we expect pedestrians and bikes to continue to interact? Because this is also, I think, government's also a thoroughfare for those who are actually commute biking. And so they're going fast. And so it's not often a place where you actually want pedestrians and cyclists to interact. And so I'm assuming that we'll still maintain the painted roadway bike lanes so that those who want to actually be like traveling quicker will have the option to do that on Government?
We are correct. Yeah, we're not planning to change anything on the road at this time. So serious cyclists who are commuting and don't want to navigate through pedestrian traffic, I will have that on.
Counselor Greenlaw?
With like the increase of cyclists and with the encouragement of access transportation, I'm just wondering if there, if the municipality is putting out resources for like how to bike safely, how to bike around pedestrians, like using your bell, following traffic signals, something like that?
Thank you for the question, through the Chair. So we do do that to a certain extent. So on our cycling map, for example, there's a number of tips about that. We do also have a series of tips which are put out in the e-newsletter on occasion. So we have the start of a program. We probably could do more.
Yeah, and then would there be any like bylaw enforcement for interactions? Like as biking increases around the city, around the municipality?
So typically, my understanding is that if it's on the road, it's a road issue under the Motor Vehicle Act, so the RCMP would be enforcing that. Now, there might be opportunity for some bylaw enforcement on trails. We're just looking into that right now, something like the corridor trail or the Discovery Trail. But yeah, typically, roadways are RCMP.
On that point, occasionally, you'll see, well, you'll see all sorts of different forms of vehicles. Right now, it's anything electric-assisted or human-assisted is fine. Gas-powered is not permitted on our multi-use passenger routes. Is that the line?
So through the Chair, that's an excellent question. We have a study underway right now to look at this exact issue. We are looking both at trails and at on-street bike lanes to understand what the legislation is and what our powers are to enforce, regulate. So it's a work in progress at this time. But it does appear that we will have some authority to make decisions about that. And the likely way we will be going is to follow the provincial guidelines. So a motor-assisted cycle has to go under 3 kilometers an hour. So can't have a motor past a certain size. And I can't, actually, the gas-powered or not may not be a feature. It's more just the size and the speed. So yeah, we will be, once the study is done, we'll be implementing that.
And I'll follow up with one on that, going down that road. Do we have, that study, I assume, will assess whether we have the legislative ability to limit the speed limit independent of the type? But to limit the speed of a two-hundred-year-old bike, so 40 kilometers an hour on a human-powered bike, which might not be a sensible thing to do on a multi-use path? Do we have that legislative ability?
So that's what we're looking into through this study. It may be that it's based on type, because the certain types themselves have limits, right? So, but to be determined, so.
All right, with no more questions, we will recess. Oh, sorry, we're still continuing.
Apologies. So we can actually stay here for the next one, if that is all right? So the next thing I want to talk about is the crosswalk that we all just popped in here. So there's a number of crosswalks around town that we hear concerns from residents about. This is one of them. My colleague, Valentina Fabio, is doing a crosswalk study right now, looking at three crosswalks. So this crosswalk and then two on Queen's Way. One potential new crosswalk between Pioneer and Commercial, and then another one down near Resolution Way near the Bottle Depot. So these are all areas where we've heard requests from people, they want to be able to cross, they don't feel safe doing it. So yeah, so she's looking at a study right now. The study will consider whether the crosswalk is needed. It looks at sightlines and safety considerations, and then it provides recommendations on improvements. So for this crosswalk, we only have draft recommendations so far, but I can share those today. So the recommendations from the engineer are that it should have a flashing beacon here. There are some sightline issues that have been identified. And so the engineers are recommending to eliminate about two parking stalls right at the north end. Sometimes the pedestrians are tucked behind those parked cars and the drivers can't see them. To add advanced warning signs so that the drivers know there's a crosswalk coming up. And then they also actually recommended adding speed reader boards, because they've noticed that there's typically speeding concerns along here as well. And so they're trying to limit the drivers down to at least 50 so that they might have a chance of seeing pedestrians in the crosswalk. So in addition to looking at those three crosswalk locations, in the same study, engineers are also providing us with some recommendations on where we might want to install more flashing beacons. So we do get requests for those quite regularly from the public. And there is a national level of guidance on where those should be installed. But that guidance, it works quite well in large urban settings. It works a bit less well in a small town like Squamish. Typically, we don't meet any of the warrants for flashing beacons, but we know that we need them in some places. And typically, it's a lower light condition, or maybe cars are going way faster than the posted speed limit. So we have these engineers helping us to adjust the guidelines to make them work for Squamish. So we do get those requests in from the public. We're going to have a really good way to decide what sites will get the flashing beacons and which ones won't.
Thanks very much. Questions? Counselor Stoner?
So really good segue to a parallel question around where the study is at in terms of reducing speed limits across the district? Because I know that this is definitely one section where there's speeding concerns, but that can be said all along the north end of government, up to where we started this tour, and more broadly in our community. And so where are our efforts in terms of lowering the speed limits more broadly?
Thank you for the question, through the Chair. So that's another site that's underway right now. It's also the, actually, the same study is also looking at the speed limits on the trails. So it's all part of the same study. So the consultant working on that study is also Urban Systems. They have developed some draft recommendations, which we are starting to digest now. Once at the staff level, we're happy with those, there will be some public consultation. And then it will come to council for discussion, likely early 2024, is my guess for council.
Other questions?
Question my own. So we have, obviously, there's lots of spots where community might feel unsafe and concerned. Being a data-driven person, I think, do we have incident report data that we can concretely say, yes, we know that this intersection is more dangerous than this intersection because there have been more incidents? Do we have that data?
So we have the ICBC crash stats, that's pretty much all we have. And then we have the complaints. So both, and we have both of those data sets. We don't have, there is a thing as a near miss camera, so we do not have that in Squamish at this time.
Counselor Stoner?
And just to clarify on that point, the ICBC data is only interactions with vehicles. And so it's not necessarily bike-on, like bike-to-bike interactions. It's just bike and cars. So it's still limited in people's perception or actual experience of crashes, is my understanding.
Yes, the data is bikes with pedestrians, bikes with cars, cars with cars, but not bikes with bikes or? Yes.
And for the clarification, the ICBC data would just be when somebody files an ICBC claim?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Any other questions? And are we moving on to the next stop, or are we still here?
We're moving on to the next stop.
We'll move on to the next stop.
Which is at Garibaldi Way at Tantalus. So we'll be stopping on the south side of Garibaldi Way, just between the north and south Tantalus Lakes.
So we will recess and reconvene in approximately 15 minutes. Thank you. Welcome back to December, September 12th Committee of the Whole Meeting on our annual bike tour. I'll pass over to Jesse Morewood for the stop here at Garibaldi End, Tantalus.
Great, thank you. It's great to come back here after, I think it was last year or the year before. We were here before the project started. So really good to come back and see this finished product, project. This project originated largely due to safety concerns. This area has really grown in traffic congestion and also active transportation users. So our focus really was to improve safety as well as mobility. One thing that we identified initially was there wasn't a lot of cycling infrastructure in this area. And due to the commercial area and surrounding neighborhoods, we really want to provide infrastructure that brought people in here safely and through it. On that note, we built a multi-use path. This multi-use path connects to the corridor trail, so it provides good access and egress point, as well as we continued the bike path north to Diamond Head Road. We installed designated bike lanes on Tantalus North, as well as a crosswalk here for, additional crosswalk for cyclists and pedestrians. Regarding safety, there really was a number of improvements that we made. We separated the cycling traffic on the multi-use path and on this, on the south side of the one-way trail. So we separated cyclists from pedestrians. We installed, like I said, the additional crosswalk and flashing light, as well as we used this green paint that was discussed earlier. So the green paint really highlights the cyclists and pedestrians in the area and that there's a potential conflict zone that both cyclists and vehicles need to be aware of. The other major thing we did is we tried to reduce the number of conflict zones that there were. And so previously, there was just a lot of traffic movement and different vehicle turning movements that were happening, so we reduced the number of movements that are happening. First of all, we removed one of the accesses on the Petrocanada across the street. So this is one less place that active transportation users have to worry about traffic. We turned Tantalus South into a one-way traffic. So this prevents cars coming out of here. So again, cyclists and pedestrians only have to really worry about traffic coming from one area. And lastly, we centralized the bus stops. The bus stops were stopping, there's different routes, and they were stopping on two different blocks. We centralized it and put all the buses at the east side of our zone. This project cost about $950,000. As always, there's issues with space when we're looking at projects. So we really, what we had to do is shift the road over to the north. And so this adds costs and complexity to the project. Certainly, managing traffic during the project was a challenge. On the pro side, this project really had felt like unanimous support for the community. It was really recognized, both that this was an issue, and also the suggestions on how to fix it. And issue identification was really helpful in the project. That's it for me. Thank you. Questions?
Thanks very much. Counselor Stoner?
Thank you. Through the Chair, you mentioned that on the south side here, that it separated between pedestrians and cyclists. Although I feel like in my experience, it's been difficult to know where pedestrians versus cyclists should go. And so I'm just curious if you can talk through who should be on which side of the yellow line?
Yeah, thank you. Through the Chair, if I said that was a mistake, what I meant to say was active transportation users were separated from traffic, not cyclists and pedestrians separated.
And then my other terrifying question on where people should be moving? So as you're coming east on the multi-use path, right before the entrance into the mall, there is a sign that says, there's a stop sign on the multi-use path. And then there's also a sign that says that the vehicle should yield to the bicycles. And so I'm just curious, who has the right of way at the entrance of the mall?
At the entrance of the mall? Great question. So, great question. Through the Chair. So the stop sign is partially to bring awareness to cyclists that there's vehicles in the area. If, once a cyclist stops and it's safe to do so, then when they're passing through, the other sign on, I think, on the roadside is really to, again, highlight to traffic that there's cyclists, pedestrians in the area, and they need to yield to them once they're moving through that access. Does that make sense? So I would say both parties have due care responsibility to look before proceeding through.
Other questions? I'll ask a question. So we had, you mentioned that there was a lot of public participation with getting this project started and people thinking about what they wanted to see here. Do we have a follow-up process after the fact where we reach out and ask, how did it go? What are the issues? Because we always, we have, we have an idea, we have a design, and then we implement it, and then inevitably, we see quirks. Do we have a follow-up process with the public participation?
That's great. Thank you for the question. Through you, the Chair, we haven't, I believe, done that to this point. I think we could and maybe we should. Certainly, when you build new projects, there's always an adjustment period, and there's always an improvement that can be made. For example, we're still finding that traffic is exiting the wrong way through here, where they're going the wrong way to the one-way street. We recently installed arrows to kind of help kind of bring awareness that this is a one-way street. Again, going back to the question, we haven't done that. I think that'd be great to do. We certainly could do it. And then, yeah, we'd appreciate the feedback.
I've got one more question, if that's okay. We've got, so this is a great example of a really complicated project with lots of interactions. Yeah, with lots of different existing infrastructure. And when Ms. Gunn talked about the, the balance between building an entire piece of infrastructure and the cost involved, for example, doing the whole trail along government road and that's very expensive. Versus the, you know, slightly more piecewise approach. There's a balance. The piecewise approach, we end up with lots of little interactions between existing infrastructure and new infrastructure. Do we have a way to balance, mitigate, or plan for those little interactions to eventually be ironed out?
I can have a solid answer to this question.
Broad question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think maybe at a higher level, something that we're doing right now is the Transportation Master Plan. And through that process, there will be a capital plan, which will be prioritized. So that will help us to really make sure we're hitting the top priority projects with the, with the big dollars. And then as far as like ironing out the smaller things, we do have an annual budget that can be used for some of the smaller projects. It's tricky because, you know, we really, the bigger projects, the higher impact ones, the higher volume areas, like those are key, critical ones that we really definitely need to work on. And it will mean that some of those smaller ones don't happen for a very long period of time. As long as we're sure we're hitting the really important ones though, then we're investing now.
Could I jump in? I'll maybe give a project example. So we're, next year, we're gonna start a design on Westway. And so what we're gonna do is we're gonna look at the whole quarter from an active, like the whole, just Westway Road, a whole quarter as an active transportation improvement project. We don't have a budget to do the actual construction, but we really want to understand what the whole core is gonna look like, how that's gonna be built out. So that if either we have projects and wanna do a piecemeal project, or a developer comes along and wants to do a piecemeal project, we know what we want, we know that what's that gonna look like. And so it pulls all those pieces into one picture. We're also doing very similar on Third. We're gonna, we're working on design on Third.
Great, thanks very much. Other questions? And are we recessing?
Yeah.
We're finished, we'll recess and where do we reconvene?
We're meeting at the bottom of Highlands Way South in the church parking lot.
Yep, thanks very much. We will recess for about five to ten minutes. Welcome back to the September twelfth Committee of the Hole Meeting. We are now at the corner of Highlands Way South and Mamquam Road, and I'll turn it back over to Doragana.
Great, thank you very much. So the primary goal of this project is to create an uphill bike lane on Highlands Way South. It's one of only two accesses into the Highlands. It's a substantial part of the population living out there and more and more people riding e-bikes. It is the time now to create an uphill bike lane. It was the number one recommendation that came out of a in-person cycling infrastructure night that was hosted in partnership with Swamish Can and our Swamish in 2019. So this is really a need for the Highlands. The constraint for this project was that we couldn't narrow the roadway, so the distance between the two curbs. And this is due to public works and their needs for snow clearing. This is a critical snow clearing street due to the grades of the street. So we would have liked to have widened the downhill bike lane also as part of this project, because it exists, you can ride it, it's just a little narrow. But in order to do that, we would have had to cut into the slope, which is a significant expense. So we decided not to do that at this time and focused just on the uphill lane. So an overview of the project, on the downhill side, the downhill bike lane where it's being constructed here is gonna be a bit wider than it was. And there's gonna be street trees now on that side in the slower section. On the uphill side, starting at Mamquam, there's going to be a multi-use path. So for a brief period, the bikes and the cyclists will share the street together. It gets the bikes off the roadway at the corner. We felt it was dangerous to have the bikes down on the roadway at that corner. And then there's a small, narrow section where the bikes and the pedestrians are gonna have to share the sidewalk on the hillside. Again, this is a cost consideration. We did contemplate something like others, the, the, the slope drops off on either side quite steeply there, right in this narrow section. Right where those people are standing actually up there. And so the only real way to widen there is to either really drastically build out the slope or to cantilever, and either of those are quite expensive options. So we decided to have the, that's all constraints in the section. And then the bikes come down onto the roadway again. And so they then take over the whole of what will have used to have been the second uphill lane there. And so there will now only be one uphill lane, not two. There will still be a pullout though, near the bottom of the steep section. So that will continue to be there. There's obviously a trade-off there. If there's a very slow-moving vehicle, there'll be a period of time where cars may have to travel uphill slowly. But it's a relatively short distance and it was felt that the benefits outweighed the cost in that case. There's also going to be a new crosswalk right near Reed, actually. And this will allow pedestrians who are coming from the Garibaldi Village area to get to the sidewalk side. It will have the flashing beacons there as well to, for safety. And construction will be finished this year on this project.
Questions? Councilman French.
So I discovered a little bit into construction that there wasn't very much information about this project. So I had residents asking me questions that I couldn't answer. And when I tried to find, I could only find basic diagrams and really basic information. That, that since changed, there's now more publicly available information. So I'm wondering if there's going to be a communication system debrief on this project to make sure that that kind of thing doesn't happen again?
Perhaps Jesse Morewood?
Yeah, thanks for the question, through the chair. Yeah, excuse me. I appreciate that there wasn't a lot of information on the website and out for the community and I take responsibility for that. So appreciate that you identified that. There has been a debrief on it. We've since not only updated the project information for this project, but also for other active transportation and construction projects that we're doing. So appreciate that, the comments. And yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Other questions? Councilman Greenlaw?
Yeah, I had a question. You mentioned snow removal and for my part, that's been an issue with me for active transportation around the municipality. Is that like, there isn't adequate snow removal on the trails that I would like to use, especially. But I was just wondering if there's any, any thought put into or any plan to increase the prioritization of snow removal on trails specifically to support that transition to active transportation?
Through the chair, thank you for the questions. So we do have a prioritization, or Public Works has a prioritization for snow removal on trails. They have two trails machines now. And so typically they focus on safety to school as well as similarly high-volume areas. Public Works, I expect, would love to do more, but in order to do that, they will need more machinery and operators.
More money.
More questions?
A follow-up question my own on this project. Just want a clarification. So will there, there will only be one uphill lane for traffic? And is that the other will be reserved for bikes? But would vehicles be able to pull onto that in an emergency situation?
So a vehicle can always block the bike lane if it chooses to. So yes, I think particularly in a snow situation. I can see that that could happen. So let's say a vehicle's trying to get up the hill, it gets stuck. Yes, it could sit in the bike lane briefly until it gets sorted out.
Thank you. That's, I know that this is a, this is a spot where I have seen many times lineups of cars stuck, trying to get up the hill for whatever reason. And just wanna make sure that they're still able to do that and cars can pass when they're ready. Yeah? Great, thanks. Councilor Stoner.
Thank you, through the chair. At our last stop, we talked about the public engagement that went into kind of designing the solutions for that particular area. And Ms. Gunn, I heard you say that this came out as a top priority from an engagement evening. But was there public engagement on the options that were presented? And I guess my broader question there is kind of like, what is the standard for practical bike? Cause I don't speak very loudly. What is kind of our standard for public engagement on options for active transportation solutions in areas like this?
Through the chair, I can start to answer this question, if you may ask for help. So in many cases, there are options. And so thinking about something like Perth, we did quite a lot of public consultation there. There was an option, could have stayed as a bike lane, could have become a sidewalk. For this project, there actually aren't a lot of options. And so this project kind of falls more at that inform level. Now, maybe we could have done a better job of informing, but yes, that's.
Any further questions? Great, and are we done on this? Yep, and so our next stop is?
Our next stop is the Discovery Trail. We'll be stopping just behind the Affordable Housing Project, unless Jesse Morewood likes to stop somewhere else.
No, that's great. We'll see how fit and then we'll talk and then rise up.
Great, so we will recess for approximately fifteen minutes and reconvene at the Discovery Trail behind the Affordable Housing Project. Thanks very much. Great, welcome back to the September twelfth Committee of the Hole Meeting. I will pass it over to Jesse Morewood for this stop at the Discovery Trail. Behind the new Affordable Housing Building, Spirit Creek.
Thank you. So we're just nearing the completion of this section of Discovery Trail, upgrading this section of trail. Like other places in Discovery Trail, we're upgrading it for all ages and abilities. So what this means is that we're widening the trail to three meters where it's not already three meters. We're paving it so it's smooth surfaces for all types of wheels and uses as well. We're putting in lighting, so it'll be lit through the section and on the section on the other side of the Spirit Development. We're, we're getting to completion. The lights should come in in the next about three weeks or so. So that will be the conclusion of the project. It's been, it's been a really successful project. A few of the kind of issues we had to deal with was there were some crown land pieces that we needed permission from, from the province to complete the trail on, but they were very supportive. We were also interacting with the Spirit Development, which was under construction. And so there were just some challenges in interacting at the connection points of both projects. But there was lots of successes with the projects. One is we've connected to the new park that's, that we'll pass by in a second. So there's, it's a very well-used park and it's a great way to kind of access that park or egress. The other really benefit is we've made improvements on Carson. Carson is where the high school is. There's a lot of kids' interactions and elementary kids going that way to the elementary school as well. So there's separated pathway, there's a new crosswalk. And really just kind of highlights that there's, there's kids in the area, which is really positive. One note on the alignment, Discovery Trail's actually changed here. Previously, it kept going straight there. However, what's happening further down the trail is the Britannia Slough is migrating into the trail. And the team felt that rerouting the trail was the best kind of long-term solution for the environment. And while it connected well into the Spirit Development, which built a section of the Discovery Trail that we'll pass through in a second. Thank you. Any questions?
No questions. So we will recess and reconvene at ten eighty-nine Wilson Crescent. Thanks very much, in about ten minutes. Great, welcome back to our Committee of the Hole Meeting Annual Bike Tour. I've got Devon Cunega, staff telling us about this stop at Wilson Crescent.
Thanks. Yeah, so this is a really good example of that, essentially, working with what you have in a somewhat difficult situation. I used to say this is our only one-way street, now it's our one of two one-way streets in town. Which does raise challenges when you're trying to fit everything in because it's a narrower road right away. So it's not your standard eighteen, twenty, or twenty-five meter road right away. In this case, I believe it's only ten meters that we have to work with. So, and this is another good example of that kind of piecemeal approach, where in this case, development has allowed us to build out a certain section of frontage. So one of the ways we're tackling this street, or planning to tackle this street, as you can see, there's line markings along the road that delineates pedestrian slash cycling area. And the idea is, and then on the other side, there's line markings for parking as well. And the idea with this is to visually constrict the drive aisle, which is a form of traffic calming. So tightening it up, hopefully causing people to slow down as they're driving. In addition to that, we're standing on a, I believe it's a two-meter-wide sidewalk in this scenario. This is actually on private property. So this is a right-of-way along this property here. So one of the ways through developments and rezonings specifically, we can improve the AT side of things is to utilize frontages of properties as we go along. And another example of activation, I guess, would be this little parklet area. So as this, as this street builds out and as we see further development along this area, we'll see this same format essentially carried forward and hopefully be a bit more of a continuous stretch before to, you know, eventually. So one, one thing I'll note too, one of the things that was kind of cool about this street is that, you know, it's really hard to test certain things. And so one thing that was actually really neat in some of the snowfalls that we had was that it's, you know, there's not a lot of area for snow because there's parking as well on, on both sides. And it's not very well, it hasn't been very well delineated in the past. So what you see right now is a really nicely paved road. This was all done this past year. Before that, anyone who had ever been down this road, it was kind of dogs' breakfast in terms of where people park. The road was in rough shape, hence why it got paved fully. What was really neat is that in the snowfall that we had previous season and the season before, it naturally constricted the lanes because the windrow where we pushed the snow, we could only push it so far. So it naturally created this really tight lane down the road. And it allowed us to essentially test what it's like to have a really much narrower lane. And you'll see at the end, there's a bunch of those flexible delineators that we were talking about earlier. That was, that's a bit of a pilot to see if we can constrict and narrow up the exit of the road to make it safer for pedestrians. And to try and not have as many people coming the wrong way on a one-way road. And so before we commit, ideally, we would have curbing and something more permanent. Before we committed to that, though, we wanted to pilot it. So we're using delineators. And so one of the, one of the ways that we tested it, not intentionally, was through the snowfall. Because the snowfall filled in that delineator area and essentially made curves. And it allowed us to see, okay, we are actually, because we're getting passenger vehicles, but we're also getting trucks and delivery vehicles. You know, the vehicles that are, you know, the bigger vehicles that are tougher to deal with. That also happened while this development was under construction. So we had large semis coming through, and I think we only lost one delineator. So anyways, it was just kind of a unique way to test traffic calming on a somewhat challenging street like this.
Thanks very much, Devon. Questions?
Here on the corner, we have perhaps a visibility issue. A couple of years ago, the bylaw was, a new bylaw was introduced, I believe, regulating height of hedges near intersections. I'm not sure whether we would call this an intersection. There is a parking lot on the other side and entry to it. But is there any notion of improving visibility at this corner? In, perhaps a question for the planning department, but has it come up in your dialogue regarding these improvements?
Through the chair, yeah, absolutely. Through, looking at the design of this road, we've been focusing quite a bit on that corner. Exact plans still underway, but a lot of it will depend on if that area develops, if that corner develops. And what happens on the other side of the road. So it's definitely on the radar, but we don't have any specific plans at this time.
Councilor Stoner.
From that particular corner, have we thought about putting any of those flexible delineators a little bit? Just to help improve the pedestrian interface with the vehicles around that corner?
Through the chair, yes, that's been discussed as well. It comes back to that public works maintenance aspect. Especially this street being so narrow, getting a plow around that corner is very difficult. So it kind of comes back to that winter maintenance, summer, you know, time use. So, yeah, it, it, but it's, it's something we are discussing and have discussed, for sure.
And then our second question. As I look down this street, there's still a lot of the streetscape that is basically given over to vehicles. There's a lot of parking. The majority of the streetscape is still provided as a drive-through for vehicles. And so I'm curious if we've talked about at all removing some of the on-street parking in order to create more space for pedestrians and bikes and slow vehicles down a little bit more too.
Through the chairs, so at this point, the design that you see is what we've landed on currently. It is challenging because this is, even though it's a lot of single-family homes, there is quite a bit of density on the street. So parking is a very big challenge. That's something we hear a lot about with this road. So it's that fine balance between having enough parking and Um, so it's that fine balance between having enough parking and uh being able to accommodate pedestrians. The long-term goal, as you see, is to uh get people off of, um, who are on foot, completely off the road into a protected uh space. But as of kind of the interim solution, this is what we're working with at the moment.
Any further questions? Okay, thanks very much, we will recess, we will reconvene at Third and Victoria in probably ten to fifteen minutes. Thanks very much.
Bit of historical trivia, before all these cars showed up, this was the subdivision developed by the railway for its employees, Mr. Wilson being the local railway boss. And right at that corner was the railway stop, and there was a gas car, passenger car, which went down to the docks, back and forth between the docks and the shops, picking up and dropping off their employees right at this corner. Maybe that's the future vision again?
Welcome back to the last stop on the Council Committee of the Whole Tour for September twelfth. Pass it over to Doragon.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, so uh, we've talked in council about both Third Avenue and Victoria several times in the past, but I wanted to provide a quick refresh or just for anybody who might be watching the video. Um, so Third Avenue is going to be a north-south cycling route downtown, um, with the bike lanes raised up at sidewalk level. Um, a concept has been completed for Third Avenue and will be moving into detailed design later this year. Uh, some of Third will be built by capital projects and some of it by development. Uh, Victoria will also have raised bike lanes between Third and the waterfront bridge. Uh, detailed design is currently underway for Victoria. Uh, so we're anticipating applying for the BCA T infrastructure grant for the Victoria project. Uh, the due date for that grant application is later in October. Uh, we do need a council resolution for that, so we will be coming to council, um, actually after October, because the due date for the council resolution isn't until December first. Uh, so we'll have more information for council when we come at that time. Um, and I just wanted to stop here today, just have a a look at this area to get a sense of what it might look like. So you can see, we have the the raised bike lane, we have um a boulevard, green space, and we have a sidewalk. In some cases, along both of these corridors, the arrangement of these might be slightly different. We may have the boulevard next to the parking and then the sidewalk uh closer to the bike lane. Um, but it'll look something like this for the length of both Third uh and Victoria. The waterfront uh landing bridge, um, timing-wise, is anticipated to start construction as early as this month, so September, um, so soon, which is very exciting. And then their estimated completion date is mid-two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, for the Victoria project, um, we are anticipating going into construction in two thousand and twenty-four. We don't have a completion date uh quite yet, but if possible, it will be completed in two thousand and twenty-four as well.
Thank you very much, questions? Counselor Greenlaw?
Um, I love the transition to cycling, wonderful, and I frequently bike downtown. But I often have difficulty finding parking for my bike, especially for the larger bikes where you have to use like a rear bike rack, you know? And I was wondering if bike parking is part of our plans, if there's gonna be an increase in bike parking and where the focus is on that?
Uh, through the chair, thanks for the question. Uh, so yes, we would like, and we don't have yet, we would like to have an inventory of all the bike racks downtown. It's a bit of a challenge because some of them are on private property and some of them are on public property, some are ours and some aren't ours. Um, and the ones that are on private property can change at any moment. So it would be, to have a good inventory, we'd have to keep inventory and kind of somewhat regularly. So it's been, it's been a project that's been on the horizon to do, uh, but it's not something that has happened yet.
Right, just.
Funny, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, on that, um, with uh development proposals, it seems we usually secure a number of bike parking spots. It does not, does that not typically include on-private, but, you know, they are obligated to keep spots? And so we can count those ones in certainty, or, and and so what you're talking about is a third one that wasn't part of those sorts of agreements?
Uh, through the chair, uh, yes, so that is, you're correct, if with new development, they are required to have on-street bike parking or bike parking for either the residents or the commercial uh units. Um, so that's true, but it's more retrofitting any of the existing um properties, so some put bike racks off sometimes and then just stick down, so, yeah.
Any further questions? Great, since this is the last stop on our tour, I will be asked, looking for a motion to terminate Committee of the Whole. Oh, don't, we have one more item in Committee of the Whole, don't we? So this is recess. Thank you very much, then we will be recessing. Thank you, John, for that, thank you, Counselor French, for that catch. We will be reconvening at, I'm looking for the time that we will be reconvening. We will reconvene at twelve-thirty, correct? Yeah, we will reconvene at twelve-thirty, thank you very much.